I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands for a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call please.
Hunter.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Porter.
Yes.
Reed. Sullivan.
Here.
Walden.
Here.
All righty, up next, we have a motion to approve the minutes of the March fifth, twenty twenty five council meeting. We have a motion to approve those, please. Do you have a second? Any discussion? Anything?
Walden.
Yeah.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yeah.
Porter. Nelson.
Yes.
Hunter.
Yes.
All righty, up next, we have a motion to approve the minutes of the March eighteenth, twenty twenty five council meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those? Do you have a second? Any discussion? Anything? Roll call please.
Hunter.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Porter.
Yes.
Reed. Sullivan. Walden.
Yeah.
All righty, up next, we got the approval of the bills, motion to approve the payment of the bills as they appear on the worksheet. Do we have to approve those? Do we have a second?
All second.
Any discussion? Anything? Roll call please.
Walden.
Yeah.
Sullivan. Reed. Porter. Nelson. Hunter.
Yes.
All righty, public comments? Okay?
Well.
Go ahead.
I don't know if you want it now, I'm I'm here about the ordinance thing, so you don't need to.
No, go ahead and talk now, is it is it about the cats?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I have, um, on the ordinance, I I just have a couple of questions, and I figured you may explain that to me.
Yes.
I want to know why we need to change the ordinance from what it is now, and if you change the ordinance and give approval to the rescues and shelters, does this automatically give the rescue on my corner go?
No, no, all we're doing, so, the ordinance for animals stated five, but it never stated like cats, rat, you know, anything like that. Just dogs, I'm sorry, but that's what I'm getting at, so we put in there that it had to also include cats. So, so we're updating that.
Okay.
I mean, I'll read it, I'll read you the line that we are amending. It shall be unlawful for any resident to keep more than a total of five dogs and or cats within the city, with the exception of a litter of pups or kittens, or a portion of a litter may be kept for a period of time not exceeding five months from birth. By way of example, a resident with five dogs may not lawfully keep any cats, and a resident with two dogs may have no more than three cats, so that's all that we're doing on that. Now, the other part, so we have an ordinance already stating that a shelter or a kennel can happen only in our commercial area, only in commercial, but there's no specifications for it, so what we did was that we created, you know, we added a line that says this, any animal shelter or kennel located within the city must be constructed, managed, maintained, and operated in full compliance with the Animal Welfare Act two twenty five ILCS six oh five slash one ET SEQ and all applicable Department of Agriculture regulations relating to such facility, and any violation of that statute or those regulations shall constitute a violation of its charter. So that's all we're doing, we're adding those specifications to where a shelter would happen in a commercial area. What zoning is doing is they're only doing a variance for this person to have more than five. Being a non-commercial, to have more than five. Yeah, well, she had to go.
She has a tenant now.
Yeah, so that's that's all she's doing on that, so zoning will either say yes or no to that. If they say yes, then she could have more than five, if they say no, then she cannot have more than five. That's all that they're doing.
So, all right, I have, it's probably more for that, but I do have something written up, and and can I read that to you with my concerns?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right, as I understand, the cat rescue will house injured and sick cats. My concerns are health issues, will they be vet treated? Who will determine how contagious? Accidents happen, if one gets loose, the chances of infecting outside animals and our pets. How will contaminated litter, bedding, so on be disposed of? How will dead animals be disposed of? Attracting male outside cats to any contained inside in heat? Excuse me, I'm sure guidelines will be put into place, but since the rescue has advertised listed as operational and taken in cats, all being against standing city ordinance, why would we believe future guidelines and regulations would be followed? When rescue is at a maximum, would cats be turned away? That would be a hard decision to make. What happens when cats are well again and homes not found? Will the five pet ordinance be upheld? And therefore, I as a neighbor do not want this rezoning and a cat rescue allowed in my neighborhood. So, thank you for listening.
All right, we'll go ahead and go down to communication for the mayor. Let me just say, congratulations to Herbie and Ricky on their wins, so, and also for Bill. So, we did you guys all seated in May, the May meeting. And you also work for the transition for Phil and I, and also for, if you all remember, the jobs that you're going to take. Just want to also wish everybody a happy Easter for this month, and I want to thank everybody for all of their duties that they have done, I want to speak on my behalf for the last eight years that I've served on this town. I mean, I'm not going anywhere, I'm still staying in town, so I'm going to be a be a part of the community, but I'm going to miss you all. Won't, you know, miss the great conversation. But y'all have been great, and so definitely look forward to moving ahead. I will also say, I am getting nowhere with the individual that owns the old IPD. I have called and called, he will not answer. I've left voice messages, he did send a letter, sort of fine, did he get it? Did he get a? Okay, so, and Stephen is also aware of it as well, so that's something, we're just kind of have to, to, to. Chances are, I mean, probably going to lead to court action on it, but I I personally am getting aware. I see on Facebook where some people in the community was able to talk to this person, but I have not. Just wanted to let you guys all know about that, so don't have to probably be the address to it sooner than later than later. All right, so I got, so you ready for what you got?
Let me just follow up on that.
Okay.
Yes, there's time to respond to the man's letter sometime next week. After that, we'll make a decision as soon as we're in file scheme, or we'll be more efficient with the bird problem. Maybe we can do something else, I guess, sounds like we're going to have to call him again.
No.
So, we'll have more for that.
Mayor, you got anything?
Yes, one thing I have is phone support.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to speak about that, because currently we have the issue with it. And Janet and I both have been calling the board of CTI, killing them on different stuff, and technically, it's now all that stuff that's on the dollar and not working correctly. And the other, Mike and I was, you know, at the city hall by the clock, I asked her not to transfer the phones, because I was trying to make a phone calls to some of the, um, of our credit card company for some fees that were on our card, that I needed to find out how to get it taken off. She advised me that she is not the one that transferred the phone, CTI doesn't include for the evening, the other day. So, I called Eric with CTI, who said that in town, and does press the numbers on her phone at an evening to transfer the calls, and in the morning, she re, and she untransferred them back to her phone, from her cell phone. They are set up automatically for the mayor's and for Tony's to go to use during the day, that's what they're set up. Okay, so anyway, I don't feel like the phone should be transferred to anybody, especially after hours. When I go up there to work and I can't make a phone call or for somebody to call me back on something, I wasted over an hour with Casey, we got disconnected, and she couldn't call me back, because I had no way to answer the phone.
So, it's, I guess, I've never called it since we changed it over, though if somebody was to call, and they're supposed to like press one for the clerk, press two for the mayor, so even if they automatically, when they call, it just automatically is transferred.
Unless you've already transferred to your cell phone, if it's transferred cell phone, you can't do that. They automatically go to his cell phone, you cannot have them both, it's either all transferred or none. And I feel like there should be no reason why our phones are being transferred anyway for somebody to be answering calls outside the city, even while being in public, because somebody that might be of something important. And if it is importance of an evening, they can call nine one one. And I think all your, all the men, the mayor's phone number's out there, all your, all different phone numbers are out there, Janet's cell phone number is out there, if that was that important, they could call you on your cell phone, and the phone shouldn't be transferred. So, I want a decision made tonight, because now we made ourselves look like asses to CTI, and they're just done with us for the way Eric talked today.
Well, I don't know.
Because he said that she has called us there several times, changed it, so. And Eric, you and I had talked about this.
No, we have, we have, we talked about the other night.
This is what we chose to do, we brought it up in a county meeting, this is what was chose to do. Monday night, we spoke about it, and you even said you don't feel like phones should be transferred of evening.
You're absolutely right, Angel, you're not putting words into my mouth, but the thing of it was, was that when there's days that, you know, Janet's not here, it was working, they did the phone transfer, because people was complaining, they called City Hall, nobody ever answered, and so it's like, okay, yeah, after sick people logically know not to call, but we do get people in town that think they can call for Seth, you know, somebody beating up their wife, they're going to call City Hall, why people still do that? I have no idea, but.
Yeah, the only thing is that cell phone, because that's what, yeah.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, quite honestly, I mean, I I don't, I mean, people who have my work cell phone and my personal cell phone, they automatically call me, I just told Janet, it's like, let people call City Hall, that, go to her directly, and then she can kind of say, hey, yes, you need to call this person or this, to deal with it.
Yeah, that's true, it's not a deal, I think that you get out of that, and you talk to her anyway, they don't want to leave a voicemail. They can do that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's fine, I'm just saying, the phones not making transferred, or, you know, I mean.
I mean, I mean, okay, so this is a weird thing, because, you know, for once, there's things that come up, and Janet and it's called me in the evening and say, hey, this situation has arisen, and how, you know, I don't know, I mean, I'm assuming somebody called her.
And we're missing calls, we have.
Yes, I didn't know that, you didn't tell me that, yes.
Yeah, because, those didn't call every other day, they come and be fucking different, like, voices, that's why you're missing calls. I talked to Eric today, he is very, very upset with what's going on, this is making us all look absolutely ridiculous.
Well, I I'll call him, I don't, I mean, I don't know what the big, I don't want to say, I think you guys are going to figure out this the way it needs to be, maybe, you guys tell me if I'm wrong, but I can hear less.
That is the truth, that is the truth, so we need to figure out what we're going to do with the phone system. That I should be able to be able to get calls, mine up.
No, you you should, and so, that's nothing to work on, you see, so.
And I would, and I would transfer the phones back to her when I left, and she said, no, I don't have, I don't do that. And Eric told me, yes, she dare do that. I mean, that is such an issue, I just had the issue, if I didn't have the, if I wasn't like to, I wouldn't be able to solve, you know, this issue would have been solved that night. He said, you have to, that was on your phone, you didn't fix it. Okay, and you told me you did. When I go to lunch, I transfer it, so, yes. See, now you do.
All right, all right.
So, I, we need to, we need to make a decision on what we're going to do with the phone.
No, it's not on, it's not on the agenda, we're not taking any vote, we're just moving on. So, all right. Hold our person. I mean, you guys, you guys can talk about it during your time, but I'm, I'm not, it's childish, in my opinion. So, I mean, if somebody has a complaint, I'll say this directly, just call me, probably till May seventh. I mean, if you have an issue, but nobody has complained, and I got complaints earlier when people were saying, hey, you know, I called there, no, nobody there, and then we alleviated that, we fixed it, we didn't have, so, this kind of seems like whenever we decide, somebody's not really being happy about the situation. Maybe, maybe I'll call CTI and say, hey, there needs to be a way for us to accept calls. Like, they call and say, hey, press one for the treasurer, press two for the clerk, that they're able to still press one for the treasurer. That's what we need to kind of work out, not to where it's automatically, when they call, it automatically goes directly to to Janet.
That's the way it is.
But, okay, but then why are you saying, you know, maybe I'm not.
She said it was called pause, that she's not getting called.
Yeah, that is true, she did tell me that, yes.
Right, and I get that, but when she transfers to her cell phone, you don't get that option to press one for the clerk, two for the mayor, three, when they are transferred, you cannot do that, is what I'm saying. And when you originally set it up, if you didn't choose the number, they're disconnected, did you know that? All the calls disconnected, you didn't choose the number, that's the way you have to set up. That's the way I had to do it, that's the way CTI do, I didn't do it, they didn't do it.
Do you think you have CTI, whoever knew it, they need on him?
Well, how are you doing in my office? I mean, I did say this to Janet, I mean, in where I work, if anybody was to ever call, we we don't transfer our phones, but you get an email, so, we get a notification, we get an email, somebody calls our line, and they leave a voicemail, we get that email, so I don't know if that's something CTI can set up and say, hey, so instead of transferring, they can still call, leave a message, and then Janet gets an email, somebody calls her line, you get an email, somebody calls your line. I don't know if that could be something that could be done, and then you go in, you know, the next day, you go in there and say, oh, they've got five different minutes to call, and that's what I do for my office. Yeah, that that could be something to, to maybe kind of work out.
I just want to get these phone up in the evening, I'm not that one.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know my name, but I said, see, it's CTI, yeah.
Everything should look locked out and let it be before it's moved out. Right, because I don't think there's ever been approved, do you change for the city phones neither? Has it, was it ever been brought to the board to be approved? I would like to see them on the phone, yeah. I like to see them. Yeah, we set the phone system for access to do that. I like to see them on the.
I know we talked, talked about setting up the phone, but I don't think you went into it as deep as you can.
No, we didn't. Angel needs to do her job, there's obviously some breakdown communication here, though we need to have Eric come over, or we'll talk to Eric and get this straight, she needs to do her job too.
Yeah, no, I, I.
Do this now.
All right, hold your person.
So, we will contact.
I'll call him tomorrow, I'll call Eric. Do you have, you have your number?
I just, yeah.
I just think I'll call the main number.
Well, I got his current line here, so I'll do it.
All right, anything else from the other person? Oh, go ahead.
I would just like to do my things, Marie, and Derek Page, for your continued service and dedication over the last eight years. Your interest and dedication have been bested with thank you, and I have enjoyed my time serving with you on the council, and thank you for giving us paid years in your time.
Thank you. And and I I agree with, with Selena, I've enjoyed, you've been a good, I mean, I remember when we put her on after John Lawrence had passed away, and John Kell and I were talking about different people to think about, and I had mentioned Selena, and she, she's been a good friend since I moved here, her and me, I mean, they've been great, we've been a family in the past, so. Always, like, at all events, you know, I mean, I mean, it's actually important to everybody in the audience, but we all are good people. Second way, all right, new business, Ron Legner, what you got?
Okay, so, I guess, just a quick update on the status of the projects is, so the sewer project, they've continued work, they've got crews on site, mostly working on, well, they're finishing up sewer mains still, and working on hooking up services to different residences, so that's continuing. We will run your agenda, there is a payment application from Petersburg to approve, and and the project is a little over eighty-five percent complete, going by the value of what they've completed at least. And then, there is the water treatment plant project, we're processing equipment, some metal job drawings right now, so that process is continuing, there is a payment application for the water treatment plant on this agenda as well, which constitutes about five percent of the project, they've been working on foundations and other site work, so, construction is underway, the water main project, they've been in, in, um, lead service line replacement, they've been doing some hot-holing to try to identify, we've got extra footage that had been incorporated in the bid back, so they're trying to identify other residences that the view with that additional footage. They, they've used, or, most of the ones that they've been hot-holing actually have, didn't really need replacing, so, but that process is continuing. The, we do have a sewer change order to approve, which is adds a manhole which was needed in one alley to do an offset to the sewer, however, we, there's a couple of offsetting deductions, some sanitary, cleaning sanitary sewer that wasn't needed, or didn't, you know, the quantity ended up getting changed to a different gap, so that gets subtracted, and there was some driveway pavement that didn't get used, quantity of that, so, that combined with the manhole and a couple of other small adds, the total change order is only six hundred and fifty-four dollars added to the project. Then, we also have a change order we'd like you to approve for the completion of the water main project. It's mostly a clarification, we had in the original change order, you've already approved, extending the final completion to June thirty, however, it listed a separate completion date of December thirty first for the substantial completion, and EPA, I didn't realize that EPA requires from substantial completion, within six months, they want you to start making payments, so, and and we're actually still doing lead service lines, so I think it's appropriate to make the substantial completion date the same as the, the, uh, full completion date, which is six thirty twenty-five, and that will postpone your first payment until six months after June.
Lance, I only had one person ask about letting's meeting, where where are you guys at?
I ended up directing it to Romero.
Right, and I guess I didn't get too involved with that conversation, but I know it, you know, it's, it's in in the works for the next couple of months, I mean.
Yeah, everything needs to be done by the end of June, and so.
I I told them if they're this month that I directed it to, and I didn't bring it out, so.
I, I got a question too.
I had, I had the, um, person that had reached out to me because something about the culvert, where it's like their alley, like, right off of College Street, something about the equipment goes down it and has collapsed that culvert, and they were wanting it to be fixed, and I don't know, when he said equipment, I'm not sure. Or these, or?
Yeah, but I know you have something that you can fix on there.
I'll have Romero looking into that, if it needs to be replaced with the project.
It is, um, the, it's on College, and it's the alley that takes you towards the apartment complex. Oh, sorry, not College Street, sorry, uh, Samuel Street, Samuel Street.
He said apartments.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
You, go ahead, Eric.
So, we, so the people have individual things to fix, I had somebody that had, so they, when they took out, they had to basically take out the entire ditch, more or less, to run the new piping in, and they had spacers basically making stairs through their, you know, through their yard to the street, well, when they put that whole ditch out, they took those spacers out, never, it just got rid of them, so in order to put that, should they submit a ticket with replacement to the city, or who should they get that to if we're running down, well, we only got like two or three months?
Do you know a location, I can have Romero to do it.
Yeah, I can do, I can do it too, for you.
Sure, sir. So, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Well, I do, well, you know, one time did answers before you was all about the pipes that were coming out. You know, eventually that will be taken care of too, the pipes that ran down by this alley. And I think that was part of the Lance here, the Lance here, yeah. All right, that's it, then, thank you, Ron. We need to do that right before you leave. All righty, up next, we've got a motion to approve the invoice for sewer, we have Petersburg Plumbing Discoursement, a hundred and five thousand three hundred and twenty dollars in citizens, a Chastain's invoice for seventeen thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-four cents, or a grand total of a hundred twenty-two thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. We have a motion to approve that, please. All right, do you have a second? All right, any discussion? Roll call please.
Follow them.
Yes.
Porter. Yeah. Reed. Walden.
Yeah.
Hunter.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All righty, up next, we have a motion to approve the sewer change order eight, from two six hundred and fifty-four dollars. A motion to approve that, please. Do you have a second? Any discussion? Anything? Roll call please.
Walden.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Reed. Walden.
Yes.
Porter. Yeah. Hunter.
Yes.
All righty, up next, we have a motion to approve the invoice for water treatment plant, that's Burley Plumbing Discoursement of a hundred eighty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty cents, and the Chastain invoice of thirteen thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars and two cents, or a grand total of a hundred ninety-seven thousand six hundred four dollars and forty cents. A motion to approve that, please. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Porter. Yeah. Sullivan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Walden.
Yeah.
Hunter.
All righty, up next, we have the motion to approve the change order for the water project. Want to elaborate any more on that?
Uh, that is the, what I just mentioned, the changing the substantial completion date so that it is the same as the final.
You have a motion to approve that, please? All right, do you have a second? All righty, any discussion? Anything? Roll call please.
Hunter.
Here.
Porter. Yeah. Nelson.
Reed.
Yes.
Baldwin. Walden.
Yeah. Alrighty, up next, motion to approve the contract change for Chastain for the water project. Right on that, what?
We don't have any contract here.
Yeah, we, it's going to abolish it.
Might have got carried over from.
I think we might, okay, that's alright. Alrighty, up next, a motion to approve the resolution for the Illinois American two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. So what this is, that this is a recommendation from the Illinois Municipal League. They're hoping every community across America will pass the resolution. It's basically honoring America, saying that we will get out and we will celebrate everything, our freedoms, our liberties, uh, that have been given to us.
Is that on the floor?
Uh, well, so next year, it's whatever, yeah, but next year is when America's.
Right.
Essentially, yes, it is on July fourth, but from what they're, what the plans are, is that they like to have America celebrate for the whole year. Next year, yeah.
One big party.
One, one big party. We're, we're going to be there to do it. Uh, it's, I mean, it just basically takes it, we are honoring America, we're part of America. The reading or anything? It is.
Remember America two fifty is coming too.
Yes. I'll, I'll, not a reading here. Uh, it says, whereas the United States of America will commemorate two-hundred-and-fiftyth anniversary on July fourth, twenty twenty-six, making a historical milestone in the nation's history. Whereas on July the fourth, seventeen seventy-six, the second Continental Congress formally adopted the Declaration of Independence, asserting the American colonies' freedom from British rule and laying the foundation for the principles of democracy and self-government. Whereas the United States semi-substantial commission, known as American two-fifty commission, was established by Congress in twenty sixteen to plan and orchestrate the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, aiming to encourage all Americans in commemorating this historical event through educational initiatives. Whereas the Illinois American two-fifty commission was established to develop, encourage, execute, and inclusive commemoration and observe, observance of the founding of the United States of America and Illinois imperative's role in the nation's history. Whereas the Illinois American two-fifty commission encourages communities, libraries, schools, local governments, historical societies, cultural, cultural institutions, and individuals of all ages to develop inclusion, memorations that reflect on Illinois's role in the nation's history and development. Whereas recognizing and supporting the Illinois American two-fifty commission will help ensure a meaningful and educational commemoration of all residents and future generations. Whereas the commemoration provides an opportunity to reflect on the state's historical significance and honor the achievements of its people and inspires civic engagement. Whereas the City of Assumption hereby formally supports the Illinois American two-fifty commission and its mission to commemorate our nation's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. Now therefore, being resolved that the mayor and the city council of the City of Assumption expect to visit the fort for the American two-fifty commission and encourages all Illinois communities to organize and participate in local events, meeting up to and culminating on July fourth, twenty twenty-six, to celebrate America's two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. There you go. Alright, we have a motion to approve that resolution. What's always the resolution number, Daniel?
Twenty twenty-five dash three.
Twenty twenty-five dash three. Do we have a second? Alright, any discussion? Say none, rule call, please.
Porter, Nelson, Reed, Sullivan, Walden, Hunter.
Alrighty, up next, we just have a motion to approve the closure of Chestnut Street for the farmer's markets that will be held in June, July, August, and, uh, in October. Uh, there also will probably be one in September. Then some of those details are still being worked out, but I don't see any initiative to get that done, but anyway. It's kind of, that's where it's at. Well, well, we'll be on down, because they start at nineteen oh five and they do go to that block. I mean, it's something that, um, I, I mean, I guess, either way, you're going to have somebody getting mad at it. Mad plugs closed off, it'd be mad plugs. What do you, what's your take on the building, uh, situation? Want it closed off?
At least ten dogs. You know, yellow, at least trying to conserve that area, at least caution tape or indicating that this is a dangerous area.
And you also, you want to also on down to, uh, on Second Street? Because I mean.
We'll wait for turnover parking.
Well, I mean, I mean, if we do it on Main, some chestnut street, there's lots of time to do it on, on Second Street as well.
I think it's possible.
Alright.
How far out? Just the, I mean, well, yeah, we'll, we'll do it down to the end of here.
Because by the parking spot, that's probably.
I'm just thinking ahead for a second, yeah, how far, you know.
If that front wall goes, it's going to go all the way across the road, yeah.
Well, in my, same way with the south wall. My issue was, we talked about committing, we knew that the building is collapsing. I, I said then, I'm not at a certain, we shouldn't block off at least a parking spot out into the road on both screens as a precaution. Things go according to that, if somebody parks there and the wall collapses and the city knows that there's an issue, we're going to talk to the owners.
Well, no, 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 we haven't. I only talked to the owner once in September.
We sent him a letter.
Yes.
There's no response.
No response, that's exactly right.
No, it shouldn't be the parking on that side, on the, on the, on the east and, uh, yeah. They just have to park in. I'll see, to the parking, right.
I just wouldn't allow parking on that curb on either street.
Right. But, just, a farmer's market doesn't start under brewery, you know. Well, there's a, it depends on how busy they are. Because like, piglets always park, yeah, sometimes down in that area. But not always.
I agree.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming that's what we're talking about all the time. I, it would be starting with this first event.
Well, I, I can say something to Darren and we can, because Darren is up there tomorrow.
I know they did that when the other building fell. They put it in the garage. Like we asked them to.
Just understand, the, the very, they've been there for a very long time. I know, but I'm just saying. You know, I'm just, I'm telling you guys, people will complain. You just know, I mean, unless, you can go get a judgment on it tomorrow, even, I mean. I know, I know, the people don't understand that. They, the, the public don't, it's trusted, they, they, all of them, they, I, you know, you want your rights, but also I, I feel for you, government cannot come in and take the problem.